Uh, Mr. L. Rudd, uh, we'll call a meeting to order. We do have a quarry. We're gonna have to prayer by Sheriff Dixon from Seattle. I'm not here. Becky, can we do the prayer for us? And I will be the pudding.
It was a wonderful day. Thank you for the weather and the bit of savings. A little movie on our part. Maybe a little rain can get things down, settle the dust. Thank you for all the many blessings that you've been receiving for us. Like those, I'm gonna put a special prayer out there for David Moody and Watts that was in a head-on collision here the other day in Fort Worth's hospital. That is Jesus Christ, and let me pray. Amen.
You join me with a pledge? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we'll go to public comments, and I thank you to screen. Kevin, please hear. You're on the floor.
Because, I mean, everything doesn't work out. My thinking about the hour we crossed across the street and why this has not been paid for. Uh, I understand earlier we were waiting on some bonds to come. There were investment bonds that were making more than.
Frank, look, that should.
I understand economics.
Yes, and we're getting.
It's 4.4.
So the hard ones make the most. And that kind of was probably this year, I'm assuming, could interest rate would fall. Soon as we get close, it's broken down.
Well, my question is, we have quite a big reserve. What's gonna happen with that reserve?
When you go out of office, is there gonna be somebody that's financially smart enough to keep us in the black? Or are we gonna go right back down where we were?
Uh, that's something I can't answer for you.
And, you know, we keep basing our tax rate on these increase in property values. But over fifty percent of your taxpayers in this county are already frozen. I mean, you can't just keep going up and up and up when your age of your taxpayer is going up too. We're not getting any new people here. And a lot of that has to do with the problem across the street. So. Our jail and our law enforcement. I mean, we have three deputies, and I know there's a lot of overtime. But when that's all you got to cover the county this size, I understand that. But I, I don't think we need to be, you know, cut most people off when they're at least willing to work here and do the job.
And in our budget, uh, we have budget for five years. We just can't, I don't know. That's part of the reason for overtime.
Oh, I understand the reason for overtime. But to you get so qualified to lead over there, then you're not gonna find anybody who wants to work here. Is there an option to move out of that building that cost a fortune to a smaller facility since we are not a jail?
That is definitely a possibility. The problem we're gonna have, I think, this is my strictly my opinion. I'm speaking to the court. I'm speaking to myself. Even when you pay that off, wherever we go, it's gonna cost money to build something. Put down a house or most, more money. Cause we might be options.
What about the way it looks? I walked in there one Monday morning and I have pictures of all the trash all over the front. And if it's not a working jail, then why are all the trash cans running over? I mean, do we not have anyone that maintains that?
That part I can't answer for you.
And the outsides, if mine don't look like that, my neighbors would make me move. All that got raised.
Thank you, Ms. Ed. All right, moving on. Item number six, public hearing, County Park Archives on. Any comments on the public hearing for that? And then we'll move into the proposed tax rate. Any comments on that? And then we'll move on to the proposed budget and comments on that. That's our public hearing. We're going to the consent agenda.
She has a budget proposal request.
I'm wanting to request, uh, for the van drivers. I'm wanting to request, uh, fifty hours per pay period, which is a twenty-five per week. And that would raise the term for.
This is just a hearing, so.
Yes.
No action on that. All right, we'll go in. So you are consenting to Senior Citizens Pavilion. We just wanted you to lock the back. Lock that up.
You're boring again. For the month of August, the senior center served one thousand four hundred and twenty-nine of those to home gang clients, a hundred and seventeen to comedy clients, for a total of one thousand five hundred and forty-six for the month.
Thank you. Extension Office, Mr. Dixon.
We have a four-eight signups tonight at five-thirty. I wanna say, uh, I really wanna thank the rodeo committee for putting on such a great show and trying to contribute to our county besides being a problem for our county. I think we've got a lot of that going on, and I think I really appreciate those guys, the work y'all put in. That brought in a lot of people, and, uh, it's always good to see things doing good. I also like to say, uh, this weekend, we've got the West Texas steer show. We probably have twenty-five head of unit for the county. And I wanna say thank you guys for y'alls, what y'all do. Uh, all elected officials, that's a rough job to serve people and to put up with stuff. So I really appreciate what y'all do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. President of the Court, Parks.
After reconciliation, the county funds ended in nine million, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, six eighteen forty. Um, that's with the interest earned gain of thirty-four thousand, nine eighty-nine, thirty-one. We're earning on the NMA at a rate of four point four-three and on the general funds of four point oh-nine. And I'd just like to say, sir, just to the public so that some of them are aware, we do have this amount of funds, but there is a big portion of these funds that can only be spent in a very specific way for very specific things. Just looking at a glance of my treasury report, there's at least eight hundred or nine hundred thousand dollars that are specific to Rome Bridge, INS, and specific other things that we can only do certain factors with. Just wanted to clarify. And that's what I have, sir.
Thank you, Parks. Kenny, other person, you're going.
Yes, um, the commissioners should've got their invoice file listing. Um, I don't know if y'all glanced it over, have any issues with it. Also, it's the end of our fiscal year, so if you have any bills, we need to get those turned in as quickly as possible so we can get that taken care of. Um, we brought in a hundred and seventeen, uh, percent of our revenue, our income. So we've got all it, and we spend about ninety-five percent of our expenses. So we've done pretty well this year.
Thank you, Ms. Malon. Law enforcement.
Yes, sir.
Sheriff Dixon.
Uh, right now, we currently have ten inmates that are housing Jones County Jail. Uh, we had one arrest yesterday on a domestic. We have three people that are in jail. We're still waiting on TV CJ to tell us where to take them. So that will reduce that population by three as soon as we get that paperwork.
Thank you, Sheriff. So we're consuming, then I'll entertain a motion.
My motion's approved.
Second, Mr. Posey, all in favor? The man, Mr. Marcy Cherry. New business, Conforth Ventures, Ms. Malon.
Uh, none this time, Judge.
Budgeting, young lady.
None this time.
All right, item number four, burn ban. What's the priority of the court?
Probably need to put it on, just got to figure out. I'm gonna make a motion to reinstate the burn ban.
Motion, second by Mr. L. Rudd, all in favor? The man, Mr. Marcy Cherry. Item number five, special revenue, Ms. Malon.
None this time, Judge.
All right, item number six, approval surplus property. Five, six-foot table, six small square tables, forty-seven chairs from precinct four community center to go to Fisher County Rodeo Association Association. I'm sorry, Chair of the Organization, Mr. Ed.
We're, uh, putting the precinct, uh, community center up for sale if approved. And if it is approved, these, uh, tables, instead of leaving them with the building, give them to organization that's been using them every year. And because of that, I'll have to abstain from the vote, being the president of the board. Is that the rodeo association? Yes, sir.
Motion by Mr. L. Rudd.
I'll say it.
Second. All in favor? Motion to carry. Item number seven, information-only donation memorabilia from precinct four community center to Fisher County Museum.
Anything picture-wise, any item that has to do with county history is what we'd be looking at. Donate into the museum so it stays within the county and not an individual's collection.
All right, thank you, sir.
I'll make a motion to.
That's information-only donation.
Sorry.
Uh, item number eight, discuss the true organization of sale of public auction. One point six seven acre tract of real property located at FM six eleven, FM four nineteen, Mr. Ed.
We've, uh, I had it surveyed this past year. We've got the exact amount, got the survey part. Uh, we've got it fenced off from the other, uh, community center. Hasn't been used since, uh, they moved the voting from out in the precincts to the courthouse. So you're talking, what, nearly fifteen years back?
Yeah, just about, yes.
So instead of having a building that we had to do content, that we had to do maintenance on, that we have electricity and water, and that if something happened, we have to take care of. Instead of it sitting there and deteriorating, we'd like to put it up so somebody in the community could potentially buy it or a business buy it to, uh, do something with it instead of it just rotting. And get it off the precinct books. And then put it on the tax rule. Yes, sir.
Pleasure, the Court. Motion by Mr. Posey. Second by Mr. L. Rudd, all in favor? Motion, Cherry. Item number nine. Discuss approve appointment of commissioner to sell the above described tract of real property, Mr. Evans.
Well, uh, we'll put it up like we're supposed to after, uh, after court. I would like to make it the, uh, after court next month cause I believe we had to post this for twenty-one days after approval before we can auction off. And then after, uh, court next month, which I believe is the fourteenth of October, uh, we sell it on the courthouse steps up here.
Sheriff, just a note. Mr. Evans will be there, but it will be the sheriff's sale. The motion, yeah.
I'm making motion to approve.
Second by Mr. L. Rudd, all in favor? Motion, Cherry. Item number ten. Discuss approve demo bid for sale of public auction of the above described tract of real property, Mr. Evans.
With the, uh, state buildings in, uh, I had the appraisal district doing the estimate on it and everything else. I would ask that the PO for the building and the land be set at twenty-five thousand. It's got central, I believe, on the only community center in the precincts out in the country that's got central on the building. And the building's actually in fairly good shape. Come here.
Motion by Mr. Posey. Do you have a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Mr. Dixon, all in favor? The man, Mr. Marcy Cherry. All right, item number eleven. Discuss approve ghostly solutions renewal year end twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six, Mr. Evans.
Hey, good morning, Judge. Good morning. Give you a. Thank you. So our agreement with the county comes up on our annual basis. Um, that renewed in August, but the judge just wanted to bring that to you in case you have any questions about it. Basically, uh, the report in front of you, I'm gonna talk about just a little bit. It's gonna give you an idea of where we are in IT issues for the county. Uh, but that renewal, like for professional services, which is what y'all pay for IT support, is thirty-two hundred dollars a month. And then you pay us for backup, uh, a backup internet connection, fax machines, firewall management, email applications, and some network management. And the total is around eighty-two, eighty-four, but it varies per month based on how many licenses are in use. So when you get rid of people or someone leaves, the bill goes down. When you add people back, the bill goes up, just for the licensing cost. A lot of that is passed through on our part, uh, because we're the Microsoft partner of record, meaning that those are all services you have to purchase from someone, uh, that we've been to this point. The handout that I gave you just kinda gives you an update on some items that we're working on for the county, uh, all as a part of the current fiscal year. And last year, we basically took several things, well, pretty much everything that needed to be addressed and divided into last year projects and this next year, which is October first, projects. Because some of those could not be accomplished in their entirety with the amount of money that we budgeted, um, we waited to make the purchases at the end of this fiscal year and then start to work in the next fiscal year and accomplish the rest of the work that's remaining that we'd outlined last year. Just for the new members of the court to give you an idea, the county went through a complete IT refresh in twenty nineteen because the county, prior to us being involved, uh, was compromised by ransomware. And so at that time, we had to, uh, we had to build up new infrastructure and, and address those concerns. Knock on wood, we've been doing well when it comes to that. I always tell people that, uh, you know, it's, it's a, a lot of effort behind the scenes. And if we're doing our job, you don't really know it, or we're not doing our job. You do know it really fast. But the odds are stacked against the county and against us in that the ransomware people, we have to be right once, we have to be right a hundred percent of the time. Those aren't odds that anyone will want. So this year, we completed the firewall replacement, backup disaster recovery replacement, um, the T-Lat system for law enforcement changed for the first time in thirty or forty years. Uh, we've completed that. You know, we're one of the first counties to go live on that. It's been working well and it's much faster and longer. The sheriff can attest to that, but, uh, we're, we're proud that we got that rolled out to Fisher County on the front end of things because we knew it would fix the problem. We've completed Windows eleven migrations for the computers that are current. Most of those are in law enforcement vehicles. Um, and then implemented the new body camera and, and in-car video management that, that y'all approved for the sheriff's office. Uh, the things that we're, we're currently working on is, and there's three of them there, one, seven, eight, and nine, that, uh, we'll be bringing back to you for approval. One is we have, uh, procured fishercounty.gov. The federal government and the state government is recommending that all counties and, and government entities move to dot gov where Fisher County is currently dot org. That does not mean your old email will stop working. That does not mean you will lose any email, but it just means that we'll move the website and the email system, uh, to dot gov, but that will take commissioners' court approval at a future date. Uh, we have, uh, received the domain name from the federal government, and it's been approved. There's no cost for that, so it's more formality. Um, we've negotiated with your internet provider. That agreement is up and, uh, for renewal, uh, this fall. And they basically agreed to no price increase, uh, even though they had had price increases in general. This was last addressed in twenty twenty. So they agreed to no price increase, and they're gonna move your internet speed from two hundred and fifty meg, uh, up and down to five hundred meg, up and down, uh, no additional cost. We're also working with your internet provider to see if we can deploy new, more reliable internet at your senior center. Uh, we've had some issues with that over the years, and we've asked them numerous times if they could provide service, and the answer's always been maybe. But now they're saying they won't be able to provide service there, so we'll bring that back to you at a future date. Uh, I expect that to be, uh, budget neutral. I mean, I don't expect it to cost any more than what you're paying them, just get a better result. Um, the phone system for the county, which is law enforcement and the courthouse, both of these buildings, uh, that manufacturer, uh, that was put in probably, I don't know, twenty sixteen.
For the law enforcement.
Yes, sir. Um, but before us, but I, I think that that's pretty close because it had to do with the new law enforcement center, and that was in twenty sixteen. Um, that system and that manufacturer have been in business since eighteen ninety-nine, and they have, they have announced that as of March twenty twenty-six, they are no longer supporting those systems and are going out of business, uh, when it comes to the phone world. We're evaluating, uh, to move to a cloud-based phone system. We expect that to be, uh, budget neutral, meaning we don't expect that to have a capital expenditure outlay. The goal is to improve service and reliability while, you know, remaining neutral in cost or reducing cost. So I don't think there's any budget concern there. The next two projects, eleven and twelve, were new computers. That is partially budgeted in this fiscal year, but not all, but the labor wasn't budgeted in this fiscal year. So we delayed that until now, um, and we're gonna be moving forward with that in September and October. And one of the reasons we delayed it is Delta's had a lot of changes, and that's who we purchased computers from on the county's behalf. And they have changed all of their models for the first time in thirty-two years. So imagine like when Ford makes a major change to a vehicle, you don't necessarily wanna be the first person to adopt that, but you don't wanna go buy the old one because it, it's not gonna be supported or not, uh, not gonna be as current as, as long. So we've worked some of those issues out just by buying one and two, uh, for other counties and, and for us internally, and we're ready to move forward with that. Between what is budgeted in the, in the next fiscal year and what's in the current fiscal year, we're gonna be able to accomplish all of that, uh, on budget. The same thing with the network. We did not fully budget for it. We plan on breaking it up into some in the current year, some of the future year. Uh, because the bid requirement changed, uh, September first, from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand for a county, uh, I believe that if we do all of that at once and just have Becky pay half of it on one side of the ledger and half on the other side of the ledger, if she's comfortable with that, that we'll be able to get more buying power, meaning, uh, we'll be able to get a better deal by making that purchase all at once, and we're prepared to do that now. And then the last thing that I was going to mention is, uh, we continue to get asked, Sheriff, by some of your staff, by previous administrations, about the camera system at the law enforcement center. And that system, we know, is end of life, end of support, the vendor's not in business anymore. We are hesitant to make any changes to that system at this point because, because, uh, it, it's just one of those things, you touch it and it breaks, and, and you own the problem, so to speak. Uh, but I know that the future of that building and how the court wants to, to move forward with that, uh, facility is a discussion, as it has been this morning. So just know that, uh, that is something, whether it's that building or a new building, that's probably gonna be, need to be addressed, uh, in a future, in a future budget. Uh, just as a reminder, that, that camera system was put in in twenty sixteen. Uh, it has a seven to ten-year life expectancy, and that's if it was cutting-edge technology. Unfortunately, it was not. It is all analog, like VCR quality cameras. So imagine watching, uh, the old tube television at your house versus the television you have today. Um, that's, that's what we're dealing with for that system. Uh, the next page, which has the green banner at the top, outlines the capital expenditures for this fiscal year, which is current, for, I'm sorry, for the new fiscal year, which is twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, we itemized that out just to show you kind of what we're looking at purchasing is to complete these projects. All of this will be purchased directly, uh, by the county, meaning that there's not a pass-through cost on our end. And, um, and we expect, we basically budgeted for a reasonable number based on, you know, prices of this equipment, but we believe we'll, we'll come in under those numbers. And there's about a seventy-nine hundred dollar contingency in that budget that if we come in under, if we come in at what's presented to you today, uh, we'll, we'll have a surplus of seventy-nine hundred dollars. If we get a, a little better deal than what we're presenting you today, it'll be higher. Uh, but we're, we're trying to play within that, what, what's been allocated by the court.
Sam, are you pretty comfortable with this? Good number?
I am, Judge, in the, uh, that's why I delayed the network purchase because we couldn't accomplish the whole thing in the current fiscal year. But I didn't want to say, you know, roll money to fund balance, then pull it out of fund balance to complicate your budget process for the next fiscal year. So I think buying everything in September timeframe around two different orders, and like I said, paying for half of it out of the current, half of it out of the future makes sense. And I think we'll come in without any problems with what y'all allocated. Uh, and then the last page, which kind of has the, the purplish-blue banner at the top, uh, we, we basically, this is for the current fiscal year we're in. We rearranged some of the items, uh, that we had proposed last year that we're gonna, that we're gonna pay for out of this current fiscal year. Uh, but nothing really changed as far as what we're purchasing. Quantities may have went up or went down, uh, but we're just trying to be transparent and showing you what, what that looks like. The only thing that we have really put in, uh, that was not discussed, or it was not itemized, I'll put it this way, is improving the network and Wi-Fi and internet service at that senior center. And we used to not get very many calls out of them, meaning that it just worked or they didn't really need it that much. And that's become more and more because I think people rely on that when they, when they visit your senior citizens center. But that's a pretty, pretty low cost. I see fifteen hundred and twenty dollars on one page and, I think, about fifteen hundred dollars on another page. And all of the, you can, one thing I'll draw your attention to is it says typical life. Computers are a five-year lifecycle, five to six years. We've gotten six years out of these, so delaying this a little bit, kicking this can down the road a little bit, actually saving you money, we'll run. Um, but all of these network improvements are a ten-year, uh, life expectancy. And then there's a few items in this that really aren't large numbers, but there's a few items in this that are a twenty, twenty-year life expectancy. And, uh, we feel confident in staying behind that, and that's been our experience. And, uh, I'll say, we, we hit our twentieth anniversary last summer and just hit twenty-one. Uh, I appreciate Fisher County and working with everyone that, that you have here. Counties always have challenges. Uh, I got told at the Tackle Edslife Conference recently by a county that has major IT challenges that they didn't realize this was important until, until it was. But if you ever have any issues or things that aren't getting addressed or, or needs that you hear up at a conference or something that you have is coming, uh, please feel free to reach out to us because we're one of the best partners in serving Fisher County. I'll be happy answering questions you have.
Any questions for Sam? Thanks, Sam.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Fisher County.
All right, uh, that number already in the budget, so I'm gonna approve approval for renewal for ghostly solutions.
Motion renewed.
Motion, second, Mr. Evans, all in favor? The man, Mr. Cherry. All right, item number twelve, discuss approve John New Dozier to be paid off out of general funds instead of that precinct, Mr. L. Rudd.
Well, I guess I just didn't understand things when we did this. I knew the ARCA funded a hundred thousand on it. And I thought it was gonna, my understanding and the rest of it was gonna come out of general fund just like it had been off the place card we had gotten all that. And, uh, all that forty-six thousand out of, uh, each precinct budget that'd be going to it. So if it was just paid out of general fund, we could use that on some kind of equipment or something to replace all this stuff we've got that's wore out maybe. But that's just my thought. If it was paid off, it'd be done and over.
Any other comment?
No, just to expand on that, Dexter, what we did when we voted that in, we used the ARPA funds just to pay the down payment on it. And at the time, we weren't sure if the money was going to be in general funding, so we voted it up for cash reserve at the time on it because we would be able to handle it there. But we had kind of gone in to where if the money was there in general funding, to use general funding. The biggest thing what that does or that's helped us, so everybody understands, is we've had one guy running it this year, we haven't had but what, one little breakdown and there was some parts that wore out on it. But that's pushed up material for all four precincts and kept us from having to buy the whole material from outside the county this year. It's come in very handy.
Right, definitely.
And with all the weather we've had this year, we need a lot more pits pushed up within the precincts. So I'll make a motion to approve it. To come out of the general funds.
I'll second.
Second. Excuse me. All in favor? unanimous motion, Carey. Item number 13, approved dimension, tenor parks, the ripped-up concrete from driveways, stucco, 1% getting filler for all those.
Well, this was the press may, he's got two potential bids he put in on the housing deal. And he was asking if the county would be interested in the concrete being ripped up at the driveway or the stucco coming off the walls of these two housing projects he's going to do. And it could be used as fillers for big washouts to hold together before he's up there with the material overs. Was always looking at, and it doesn't matter which precinct, he doesn't have a total amount yet. It's just to see if we give approval for it. Once he had the amount, we'd have to pick it up and we'd have to come back and get information on the amount.
Or do they?
I guess hearing Roby's what he's saying. But it doesn't matter which precinct it goes to, if it happens, we just have to come back with information to the court for the amount of material we got for audit purposes. But we would have to pick it up if it happened. They tear it up, we just have to load it and haul it.
Definitely got a place it can go, but.
It's one of the nice. I say.
I'm going to get it, I don't know how they're going to break it up and get rebarred. Other thing. I'd hate to commit to it until I think what was actually getting it there.
That's up to y'all.
I'm not interested in it, but I don't have a problem accepting his donation, but I don't. You know, it's me like if he's going to get paid for tearing that stuff out, he can deliver it. Who's ever barring him, so that because that's, he's bidding to tear it out, I'm sure he's bidding to get rid of it, that's just bidding process. I don't want it, but I don't know, I don't have a problem with taking it, the donation. If somebody wants it, I'll just table it for a time being. And say, and visit with him and see what what be getting into it, for sure.
And when the discussion?
Thoughts? As I understood it, his bid, if his bid reflected if he was donated, given in the way or not. So I guess it would change bids, so it's up to y'all. And you do, God forbid you want to do, I mean, you can approve the donation, it's not all for have to work out and think of the pendulum to risk, it's all of you can turn it, I don't care. But we need action on it one way or the other.
So we can approve to accept the donation. Say that again, I ain't got here and I didn't.
I mean, you can either accept the donation, he's not saying you got to take it or whatever. Y'all can work that out, or you can just table it till you go into, have you want to deliver it?
He probably needs it done before he go ahead and make his bid on it, I might need to.
I would say we make approval for acceptance of it if it doesn't have trash we can't use for filler. If it's got trash we can't use for filler, then we're not going to take it. And if we accept it, then we come back and for information, put the amount of yards and stuff. Would be my suggestion.
If you're not going to, we can tell you, I'm not sure, y'all can talk to him.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll, I just wrote some bitch with him, say what he's got.
Somebody else?
I don't want it, I don't want rebarbing, I ditched it, that's just a blowout tire for me.
My suggestion, Jane, a motion to table it and have to use it with them in readdressed next year.
I made a motion to table it.
On favor? Motion, sure. Item number 14, information only, run this court, Mr. Carey, Pippin.
I just want the public to know that I come in, I guess it's probably two months ago, and ask for money for a road repair. We've already hauled over 300 belly dump loads, mostly on 106, it's a school bus round. I just want to know where the money's going that I asked for, I'm not, I didn't ask for it just to be getting it, I asked for it because I needed it. And I'm using it. And we're going to contain you to rebuild the roads.
Thank you, Mr. Pippin. Item number 15, discussing through additional full-time road end for precinct three, it's closed.
I was, the reason I was considering this was because of the part-time salary is is pretty low and we haven't raised that and that that can be addressed in the budget as well. But this, as far, I I think that we could use another full-time hand and were, before I was handed this issue, the money that I was going to use was out of that 10,000 to pay for the full, the road end for a year and and then see if we could come up with some more the next year and see how that would work.
Which 10,000?
What you just talked about.
But I, if you go back and look on the agenda, I put on the agenda for road repairs for that money I was selling. Oh, so you can't use that for payroll?
Okay.
But you're right, we do need another full-time hand, I guess we got to discuss it in budget. When it gets to budget. So if we got the money.
There used to be three road ends.
Used to be five.
Well, I know in my lifetime, there was three at one point that were full-time road ends. Why did we do away initially with that 13,000 to any of them?
That was before my time, I've been here 20 years. Answer that question, Pat.
Because we had no money.
That's what I was going to say.
We had a deficit budget, our, I think our tax rate was around 97 at the time.
I think you're out there with 96.
That was in 2013 and everybody.
County clerk's office lost a person, which I do have two now, but I paid for one of them out of designated. And then I, and so we lost two because Becky and I both worked out there for D. All the, all the commissioners had to lose someone and we lost, I lost $5,000 in supply money that year. So we all cut everything to the bone when that happened. And that, I mean, that is literally what happened, which is did not have the money. And that was the only thing we did.
I don't know, I was also.
I remember that, if we didn't maintain anything, it's not too bad for what we got, but when things are washed away like we got here this last round.
I know, it was explaining to me when we came on that our part-time salary was for two part-time hands and it's not, it's not even for one. Because you explained the other day, or well, two weeks ago, we were talking about it on the part-time salary. If we have one part-time employee year-round, we're what, 3, 4,000 over on what we're walking through the part-time?
Well, that's why I'm like right now, there's three of y'all right now, because y'all, you know, have been using more than one that are negative in the payroll funds at the moment. And it's because there was literally two years that, you know, to make the, to make the budget work, that was flatlined now to 20,000 one year and 21 another year. And it didn't, it didn't grow like the rest of the payroll numbers. It was, that line was used to help cut and make it to where you could hear your guys raise and give other employees a raise.
And I will, I'm sorry if I'm speaking out, sorry, but we'll tell you when we cut all that gas. I mean, I'm not saying it would be three, I agree, I agree with you. But I'm just saying when we cut those and y'all went down to two, they also did not give y'all any part-time money for that. You had two road ends and that was it. That's how our work.
Yeah, that was in 2015, I was.
No, it was 2016.
2000, well, that was in 1999.
It was like an 03, 02, 03.
I mean, I mean, this was for several years, but that was our biggest, our biggest year we, that we, it was, it was a lot of things coming that year.
That's the pleasure of the court. On the full-time road.
Is this something that that needs to be in this or what the new budget?
Well, I mean, this, if you adopt the budget today, we need to make adjustments as we speak. It's on there, so. I'm just saying for what y'all want to do.
If you do that, I understand why it's going to cost each precinct $56,000 a year.
I think Becky has another.
50,000, 400, $54.
54, 659, 54?
Gina got a vote for it. This is what it costs for children.
With what's left in general funding, even with the Dozer stuff coming out, is there money there to do it?
Well, you're paying for the Dozer this year, this is the next year. And so, yeah, you can have a surplus. So, yeah, you can, you can put that in there. You have 50, 50, I gave them a 6, I think, 50,000 surplus.
For drop the surplus, continue, wait.
It's, yeah, it's 271, 207, so 50,409.
So if our surplus is 50, 5409, that was our surplus, I want to get it?
Yes, 50,409.
And you're looking at, what, 54,000?
What'd you say? The total will be 22798.
All over. I don't agree.
What if you made that, so the third hand? If we was adding another full-time hand, would we drop our part-time? Because that would give us another 20,000 that we're already budgeted for. That throws it back up into 80,000. But at 20-something thousand, we got, for a part-time?
Yes.
So you would have that 80,000 to go back towards that, so it wouldn't actually cost you the 220?
Yeah, but you could take, instead of getting rid of all your part-time in case you need it, if something comes up.
Yep.
Instead of dropping a ton of part-time, you take the part-time down to 4,000, something difference on the surplus you would have for each precinct, make it match with the full-time number.
They also have some overtime too, because sometimes y'all have to.
So you're not, you're still within there to where if you do need it, it's there to help with the overtime on the roads. Because a year like this past year, we've had a lot of overtime with being rained out and stuff like that. I've got two part-time guys working for the precinct right now, still trying to try to catch up on everything that's gone on through the year, just like I know a bunch of precincts have. And just because we got three time, three full-time spots, doesn't mean we're going to have a fit either.
There's a couple of things I want to address on that, like you hit on the last one. We have a running budget and we can do that. Filling those spots mainly is like the sheriff's office, is producing the budget, you may not have the people to do it. I'm just making that point clear. The other thing I want to know, or I want to say is our biggest complaints for roads, we gave 408,000 two months ago, 10,000, 30, that helps. If you wanted to be ever full-time, and that's the compliance, I think you're addressing what the people want. If my judgment works, y'all want to do that.
Yeah, is this something we can do now or do we have to wait till after the new year?
No, I mean, we're still on proposal, but that'll change your budget.
All right, this clerk going through.
We saw the proposal, that's clear. I think that's confusing, you know, can Hollins come back and read recipes?
I'm not confused on that part, but I think, I'm thinking now he missing it, when you read about 10,000 in part-time 4,000 don't get you nowhere.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying. The 4,000 coming off of what it said at right now, your 20,000 is what it said, you're taking 4,000 off that 20 for whatever, who I'm figuring it up right now and what the actual amount is.
What was it figuring in the number?
No, that's got her to give me the number for, for part-time.
These 62, 76, 60, 62 that'd be coming off there. Correct? That was the numbers we had picking?
Well, I'm looking at, I don't, I remember I had it, what Gina gave me this one.
If we get the surplus.
Yeah, you have to keep that one.
That's what it costs for the hand.
Right, right, your part-time?
So that would leave a difference of this. Then if we took that off of the part-time, reduce that off of part-time, it all loaded up.
Yeah, I mean, you're still going to have.
It'd be 6,276.62 cents coming off the $20,000 part-time. If you were to put a full-time hand in and with the surplus that would come in for each precinct and what it would cost to do the full-time hand, that would be outright, so you would still have it should have 13,723, 38 on part-time budget.
Right. And normally we would just leave that one here, the, the Dozer being or somebody shredding. So that shredder's not here.
But like we said, you know, I was told when I came in, that was for two hands and it's not even enough to cover one full-time, part-time person through the year. And that was reduced back prior to coming in because trying to meet budget. So.
Jake, will you and Becky lead, you on the work of little blacks and I'll get the.
I see those numbers are.
If they're going to reduce down the part-time end at a full-time, yeah, we'll need to redress those numbers I gave you.
Okay, yeah, because that the first set's not.
Yeah, because the first set has, that I gave her was to add another full-time person, but leave them the part-time as it is.
Okay.
So is that what you gentlemen wants to do?
Yeah, let's take a little, or y'all get the number so we know exactly what they are and what we're going to.
Sheriff, you want to give the commissioners court, maybe in my ARCA, I mean, they don't have to give you that, so. And my ARCA plan, do you want to do that?
It's whatever, only kind of.
It's whatever you want to do, I just thought that'd be something we had to do when we came back. Because we don't need Gina and Becky there.
Sure, that's fine, y'all will.
God bless Pat.
They don't need us, Gina, let's get out of here.
They don't need us either. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. I was just thinking, I'll be sending you.
I was just thinking, I'm just.
I wasn't thinking that far either.
Yeah, I'm saying that going to the bathroom.
Oh, sorry.
Hold it for two more items and you can go.
Put this on table.
All right, item 16, approved commission court meetings FY '25, '26. Y'all had that plenty of lead.
That's your ready.
Sucking off the first.
Motion second all the papers.
Okay. Uh, the number 17 is my ARCO plan for 2020, serious, I'm required by the legislation. I send it all to you. Does anybody have any questions? I have to get in here, so.
Do you bring changes in it?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Poggi, all the papers. Thank you, Pat. Now we're still breaking.
Yeah, we're not. Sorry. I don't know how he's always putting on. He's a wild one.
Make a motion to approve.
Base pay rate?
Is it, is it? Got a pay rate of 5%? That was agreed on last month.
I just got angry, I didn't get a foul, I didn't got angry to travel in.
It's just the solid.
This is just base pays on the solid, second.
You second?
I second.
Motion second all the papers? Motion carries. Item 19. Long duty, I think you have that before you do.
That's the long duty as discussed in the last commissioners' court meeting with the changes that you, that you approved in the last commissioners' court.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Poggi, all the papers. Your motion carries. Item number 20 adopts budget with changes for the full-time hand in each precinct. Mr. Ed, I think you have that.
Motion. Do we need to, do we need to straighten that travel out on the JP before we adopt the bird?
I don't need. Few more, uh, I don't know that. Uh, we got a deal from Megan. She said it's probably either way you want to do it. She's realized what the agency says, but how the county's looking looks like, so. She said it's strictly up to you guys.
Done it both ways as far as.
Yeah, reimbursement for travel and all of it. She's okay if we want to put it in payroll.
It was travel allowance or car allowance.
I just say literally how it was.
We'll just have to change the.
The verbage on it?
The verbage.
In that one, 3,000.
That was 50 minus 3, 37.
Do I need to make a motion on that? I might get a motion to leave it as it is, but change the verbage on it to make it legal?
Back to the original contract.
Yes.
Second. Restrict it all papers. Motion carries. There, I'll just do this.
I make a motion that we move that the budget be adopted with a tax rate of .554359. This rate will raise more revenue from property taxes than last year's budget by an amount of 200,045.86 and 9 cents, which is a 5.4% increase from last year's budget.
Do I have any seconds?
I'll second it.
Your motion is second all the papers. Then this motion carries. All right, items 21, 22, and 23, over the weekend, on the phone with a law firm. We can adopt that today or we can re-cose.
Yeah, but notice in the meeting to vote on the tax rate that was put in the paper, the one line on the very bottom second page of levy of tax had the wrong figures in it. And so, it doesn't change the tax rate and we're still with the lowest rate we can adopt. And that's what's on the first page. So it's only the information that was missed up.
So, y'all can, y'all can adopt it, it'd be fine, or we can re-run it and adopt at the end of the month, we still have the end month to adopt the tax rate.
My suggestion would be that we table items twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. We have a special meeting on the twenty-ninth, which is the last Monday, adopt the tax rate.
And re-run it, right?
Yeah.
We re-run it to make sure everything's covered.
Yeah, but, but I just want to clarify that the voter approval rate is lower than the known revenue rate. It's the lowest rate the county could adopt, we didn't, so. The only thing that was wrong was the information on the levy on the second page, and so, what I'll do, since the paper, they'll re-run it, then y'all can adopt it at the end.
On the twenty-ninth, we approve those three items on your tax rate, your minimum, and our, every most of it.
I'll make the motion that we table it, and have a special meeting on the twenty-ninth, that way we can run it and be a hundred percent legal on what we're doing.
I'll second.
The motion is second, all in. That being said. We're done.